We'll call the regular meeting of December 2nd, 2025 to order. Anyone like to put an indication?
Heavenly Father, we come before you as a board of commissioners asking for guidance and direction in dealing with our county business. Always, we want to give you glory and honor in every way, as brought out in Philippians 4:20. In Jesus' name, amen.
We have one, do you believe some pledge?
The flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone has an agenda in front of them. Do we need to make any changes to the agenda?
I just have one. Erin can't make it today, so we need to add her to the next agenda.
So Erin's gone?
Yes.
Overlapping into a little bit of what the minutes have brought out, the official ones, it was mentioned that the discussion on reissue of check is going to be put on the next meeting. So I would at least like to include that into old business so we can discuss it, maybe get a plan put together to discuss that with Paul.
Okay. Put that under the new old business? Any changes to the agenda?
Move to approve with changes.
Second. We have motion, property second, to approve the agenda with changes. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing that, all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Next up is vouchers. Okay, ready to approve AP vouchers. Somebody wanted to do these stuff, or is that where you pulled them?
We want to, let's talk about here. Here's the DM1, I don't want them. And I don't mind that we have a forgiveness one, but we have one here that was done after we did the... This one I'm pulling, we just need to agree to my here. This one was done prior to the change, so I don't mind signing that one. This one however, was done after we changed the policy. So if we wanted to send them a note to these, and also explain the tax. That's okay, I mean, we need tax taken off, a reminder of tax being taken off under, we had passed our policy of getting prior approval before these. That's just why I put this.
We, that was on the 18th?
This one was the 20th.
That one was.
This one was way before that one. This one on this one is, yeah, here's a curiosity on this one. So I just want to ask, does anybody have any idea what 2025 Wyoming Weston County property tax has to do with a copier?
What?
Do you know? Why are we getting charged $14.33 for 2025 Wyoming Weston County property tax? Any clue?
How does he do that?
It's Marco. It is the victim services. I'd like that one investigated as to why they have to pay. So could we just write maybe a little memo to these other two visas, like what policy, when we approved the policy and that we need prior authorization on the one? The other one I don't mind so much, just a reminder. And no tax.
You want to hold this from all the way back?
I think, I mean, they billed us, I would like to know, I'd like to hold it back because I'd like to know what that is. Just to call to Marco and say, what is that? What's that tax score?
It's for, well, I think this is copies. It's for a copier agreement.
Yeah, it's an agreement, so why are we paying Wyoming property tax fee? What is that?
Are they billing us for?
Yeah, what is that?
The property tax? Yeah, this is out of your office, Michael.
So is this one? Oh, this one's.
Do you have an explanation? Do you have an explanation on these?
Just to have an explanation on what that, what are we being charged, and how many terms are we being charged it? I mean, I might not have seen.
Is it like the, is it like the prairie or something?
What is it?
The footprint, the copier takes.
Probably paying, we're paying the tax on the, on the property. That one just, it was done prior to our policy change, I just wanted to pull it to remind, the treasure, oh, she lost it.
I'll make, I'll make a note.
I'll look.
Okay, you want to, okay.
Yeah, and I don't think she was potential spam.
Was she not potential spam? You, oh my God.
Why Ed?
You know, you do look good in that, the jeans. You really do.
I probably read because I haven't read.
Is Marco in wait?
Who's he?
Marco, no, no, we're gonna go and have him call.
Okay.
And this one just needs to have the tax taken off, taken off in prayer. It's victim services. And prior.
Tax on these two.
Yeah.
I had to circle. You know, oh, I want to just scribble, I'm making notes. So we're gonna configure this, Marco, we're gonna pull that one, we're gonna pull.
And the other one just needs a note, and we've got a note in it.
FYIs.
So not necessarily for, we just drop it down, saying please get prior approval. Only we'll take one time on that one, because it's a redeferring one. And take the tax.
Okay, I'm gonna try this. Mr. Chairman, I make, I move that we approve all vouchers excluding associated airport vouchers and number 74625.
Okay.
Second.
We have motion, property second, to pay vouchers excluding the vouchers paid to the airport board and warrant number, voucher number four, number 74625. Any other discussion? Hearing that, all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Now we want to payroll vouchers.
We need approval for the.
Oh.
To pay the two. Move to approve the airport vouchers.
I will second that, since Garrett recused himself.
I will.
Have motion, property second, to pay vouchers regarding the airport board, with Commissioner Borton recusing himself. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. For those people here, Nate was in yesterday, I'm all for those doctors, so they are getting done. Do you want to make one? Motion to pay vouchers for that.
Oh, I did. Oh, are you okay with the motion of that?
Okay.
You seconding that, okay.
If now, we're working out my person.
Do you payroll vouchers?
I was just wondering if we could pay, we're gonna look at that Weston County property taxes, so we don't put them behind on everything else. The remainder of that bill can be paid, so we, the clarification.
Well, I don't know what, why?
We don't take any tax, we shouldn't be paying any.
Well, just an explanation of what Wyoming property tax fee is. That doesn't make any sense. So, just need an explanation of what it is.
Without that, they drop it down from 176.28, we drop that voucher to 161.95, if we were to pay it with that proportion held. Put the warrants place on that one.
There's another one there, about?
Yeah, there's another one out there.
I'm by the fiscal chair by approving all but line number two, which is the property tax line, that would, that would be us asking for an explanation, that could be sent in with that, stand alone. Mr. Chair, I have moved that we approve the Marco voucher excluding line two, the amount of $14.33, bringing the total down to 161.95.
We have motion, property second, to pay the warrant, it's Marco, excluding line number two, the amount of $14.37, which would bring the total to 161.95, without any explanation. Is there any other discussion? Hearing that, all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the payroll and payroll vouchers.
Second. We have motion, property second, to pay, to pay payroll and payroll vouchers. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Next up is public comment, having public comment.
I was wondering if I could go from 10:50 to 10:30. Possible. Is that Erin, it's not gonna be her?
Oh, we can move you up to that spot. Okay, hearing your public comment, we'll move on to minutes of November 18th, 2025. Commissioner Hurdman?
Okay, under chairman's signature on amendment one to cooperative agreement, we need to fix responsibilities, cool beans, and then perhaps take out the words on the one, two, fourth line, partial way in, we're okay, and change it with comfortable, words and words of that. Under letter of support, Casey Keeler came in as a Weston County board, museum board member, I'd like to put that in there after her name. And then the second line, after these letters, either we take out the word with, and put in the word will, or we take out the word with.
Well, I thought will.
Okay. Under discussion on reissue of check, first line, after vendor, that was, I'd take out the word first. Then under new business, put the T in, grant. And under public, public comment, I just would like, it said Jason Jenkins spoke during public comment, I would like to just state, put in there that he stated that he found more information on the fingerprint machine, and will keep the board updated. I think it's just nice to have that in our minutes, that that's what he talked about. And so that we don't have a moment where we go, well, you never talked to us about it. Yeah, you did, so.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes of November 18th, 2025 as amendment.
Second.
We have motion, property second, to approve minutes of November 18th, 2025, meeting with the amendments. Is there any other discussion? Hearing that, all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Next is collections. County clerk with $7,751.66. Clerk of district court, $1,434.69. Public health, $1,941 even. The sheriff, $1,020 even. The airport board, $6,698.73.
Sorry, I'm just trying to find it, so I can leave it out. Oh, there it is. Is the world gonna fall over if we don't have that one signed in this? Yeah, leave it, just leave it off for two, or tell me?
I'm having to stop in whenever it's right.
I mean, we could, I just don't, I don't want to play Garrett in that position.
We can approve with Nate's signature, later signature.
We're just doing similar to our vouchers.
Vouchers.
We're gonna approve on the motion, and then Nate can sign it.
Well, I'm gonna hold it then.
Okay.
Okay, Mr., otherwise, is it okay for everybody if I put it in one lump?
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the collections with the Weston County sheriff, in the amount of $355. Pardon me, where's?
Well, I just added them together, because they were two.
Oh, both the sheriffs put together, okay.
Clerk of district court, $1,434.69. Weston County Public Health, $1,931. Weston County Sheriff's, second one, for $665. And the county clerk in the amount of $7,751.66.
You did leave the airport on. I left the airport on, second. We have motion, property second, to pay collections for the county, as forementioned. Is there any other discussion? Hearing that, all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
The airport's being held just for Nathan's signature? Is that right?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that we'll move to approve. If he chooses not to approve by putting his signature on, then I imagine he would bring it back. But I think what my motion will be is that, I'll just make it, move to approve the two signatures on the monthly statement for the airport board, with Commissioner Borton stating.
I second that. We have a motion, property second, on the floor, to accept collections in the airport in the amount of $6,698.73, with Commissioner Borton stating, this will be finalized by Commissioner Todd's signature by a later date. Is there any other discussion on that? Hearing that, all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Next up is board signature on tax total corrections, 1811 through 1816.
Move to approve.
Second. We have motion, property second, to allow board signature on tax total corrections, 1811 through 1816. Is there any discussion?
May we have the assessor coming in and explaining to us what this SNS builder letter is? May we have the assessor coming in and explain to us what this S&amp;S builder letter is?
Hi.
Hello. Would you explain what this means, please? Before we sign it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, so for personal property, which is business equipment, business equipment is taxable, and we call it personal property. Um, a lot of larger companies that do business all over the state prorate their equipment valuation, depending on how many months that equipment is in each county. So if somebody has a large piece of equipment doing work in Weston County for six months out of the year, and Metrona County for six months out of the year, we actually prorate the value of that piece of equipment so that each county is getting their portion for being used in their county. Um, S&amp;S builders is all over the state. I guess their home office is in Cheyenne, and the assessor's office in Laramie County neglected to send their proration out before the abstract was done and before taxable went out. So they sent us, each county that S&amp;S had equipment, they sent us how much of assessed value was in our county for S&amp;S builders. Wait. So we had to do a taxable correction to collect from them. Does that make sense?
Sort of. How come mobile machinery doesn't cut it for those?
The mobile machinery stickers are just, allow them to be mobile, but we actually collect on the value of the equipment.
Okay. Interesting.
And how we only got 35 assessed value, equating to a very small amount of actual tax collected, I don't know. Um, they usually just send us the assessed value, not the breakdown of which pieces of equipment they're valuing, that's in the home office of Laramie County.
That's very interesting. I've never seen anything quite like that.
So we prorate every year on certain businesses. We have very few that we actually do that for. Fisher Sand and Gravel is one of them. Dan Hart, I believe, does it as well, just because they have equipment that's statewide. And each county benefits from those pieces of equipment being in their county and working.
So technically, anybody that had any type of that business, if they left equipment, would owe that?
So some counties just pay taxes in their home county, and some prorate. And I don't know what the benefit of doing one or the other is, honestly.
But there's no obligation statewide? That means statutory?
Not that I know of.
Interesting.
Mr. Chair, question over here. Is that based off of functioning equipment, or just location of equipment?
It didn't work.
Okay.
Typically, yeah.
Functioning.
But personal property is self-reporting, so they tell us what they're doing. And we have no way to actually double-check that.
Wasn't it S&amp;S that did the bridge?
Yeah.
That'd be a lot lower than... Okay. To each their own. Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate it. Never seen anything quite like that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
If this is a commercial, if we're making a commercial for, hey, move to Newcastle, Weston County, start a business, raise your family, what's your sales pitch to people?
So, so the good news is, when I go down Main Street and I see the decorations out on the street, and know that that business is open, and it's welcoming, and you know the person, you know the owner of the shop, that is wonderful. I have one little story. This, this little boy, um, was waiting at the library. I was across the street sketching, and, uh, here comes his buddy, and he takes his bike, and he stashes it under the tree, and off the two of them go skipping down the street. And I'm thinking, what a wonderful piece of Americana right there. I mean, that is our town.
Okay. We have a motion, properly seconded, to approve the Board's signature on Taxable Corrections, 1811 through 1816. Is there any other discussion? Hearing that, all of you favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carried. You should be long there, setting that close together.
No, no, instead of him getting paper cut.
I banned war, but...
Jiminy?
Morning.
Morning.
Jiminy?
We had a real company truck, um, rocks and all, a while back. And they're insured, so they're going to pay any place it. Other than that, what kind of light, that's why they're allowed. So we've got the gravel trucks working on the up tenure right now. And why, I think we're in a process of progress on, uh, what you've done.
Yeah, we have a draft done, but we just need to check on... What was it? We were just talking out there, the...
Maybe we need some discrepancy.
Yeah. And numbers.
Yes.
Which district was this on?
Kenwood Drive.
It's just a kind of a mess.
It's a mess.
I think where we wanna be with the great enough engineering negotiators, so I'll get that, get to you guys.
How's employee search going?
Fair.
Fair.
A lot of bites, couple.
Mr. Chair, I was gonna ask Jim, uh, do we have any issues with our pumping unit out there? The county shop, we had a voucher that came in, so they can get the pump over.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what he had going on. I think that was specific to him, with everything, because I had one issue.
Okay.
Take that all back as well. Nobody else is.
About it?
I've had, um, two calls on my personal phone. They don't leave their number, and they don't leave a name. Um, but it's for Sweetwater Road.
We get the same ones, and she hangs up before we can get a name or a number. Most of the time, what I got, what she's complaining about is in the state hideaway.
Okay, 'cause I've gotten that too. There was the pod hole one, and then the tree bees.
Yeah.
Not much we can do about the tree bees.
Because it gets ice in front of those nailboxes, and those nailboxes are in the white hideaway.
Okay.
And the pod holes, I had to try to fix them. That's rhododendron there, so that's...
Oh, kind of.
Kind of, yeah. Basically, you've got the ground chips, but you can get a little soft the edges. I did visit with Greg from the city last week, to come here to be able to buy some rhododendron from him to try to pass something down that's on.
Okay. I mean, that's good to know, 'cause then we, if I ever get to pick up the phone. Sure.
On the rhododendrons, who does that? The second quarry out on East, going east, 85? There's a big pile of rhododendrons out there that hold in too.
Yeah, I think we've got a small pile, it's an area, I think that there are five or six white lots.
Yeah, okay, I didn't think that was. And they hold a bunch in there with that southeast project that's going on.
I don't know if you guys got any more information on it than I did, but they did, took the bid out for the bridge, and it's been awarded.
I didn't see, I didn't see the information on it, but who was awarded it to? Oh, I'm not surprised. I don't want to get the bridge builders in here.
I think it's right at 6.6 million.
Not surprised.
About what we figured it was gonna be in. And that's the company that did the...
Black.
Yeah. That's the Great Channel, Black Thunder.
They did.
That it?
Yep.
Any other questions for Jim?
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I'm here to ask, to answer any of you guys' questions about the, um, the insurance thing. You guys got comments? I'm asking you guys to hold off for another two weeks, because Nick White is talking to the insurance company. And he's talked to the adjuster, because David called me yesterday afternoon and asked me, can you guys, can you hold off on that for a couple weeks? So, I don't...
I did with Nick last night too about that.
Okay.
And what it is, his bid is $2,000 higher than what the insurance company wants to come in with. Visit with Nick, the, basically, insurance company come in and lowballed it. They're quarantined, stuffed off. So I was gonna visit with Michael about it, maybe give him a call on what they're, why they're holding it up. So it's, yeah.
That's right, and I thought I'd come in to see if you guys had any other questions for the... The outside's done. The inside is started. Um, they started sheet rocking it yesterday. So it's almost done.
Yeah.
So it's, it's going good. And another, on another note, is I've got a credit card, that is automatically taken out of our credit card. We have a pay, for Payhole, for QuickBooks, is 700 bucks. QuickBooks itself is $1,049. And that's supposed to be coming out this month through our credit card. Our credit card bill does not come up here. It comes to us. And then we have, each month, they take $21, $7 for each employee. And I know you guys just did this, and I didn't know. I did know about it, and I called when, um, Mr. Hayrick was on the board, and I asked him if we had to pre-approve. And he said, "No." And then I called Garrett and asked him, and he said, "Yes." So, since we have our own money. So I'm, I want pre-approval, because it's gonna come out the 21st of this month. This $1,000, $1,049. I know, I know this is... When I heard that you guys changed the policy, this is why I'm... I get this straightened out so we can... Because to me, I really don't like QuickBooks. I think there's something cheaper out there somewhere. But...
I'm just getting a stomach ache from, um... What happens is that we give a block, and then the money becomes, um... We can't see what, where the money gets spent. And so even you having a credit card that is paid by your board, to me, is, is being held behind a shield of, of, of what's going on. And, and part of what our issue was with credit cards is that it's... What happens is we just pay the credit card bill, we don't pay for the voucher, we don't pay for the, the item. And that's technically, um, against the law, because you have to have an itemized. We have to approve it prior to. And all we're approving is the credit card bill. So, um, there's a funny, weird issue here, that when we give, um, that block grant, and then give a, a, a checking account, we lose that transparency. And that's why I'm not bait on the, on, on the fair board having that, that credit card necessarily. It'd be all under the same umbrella, but, um, the checking account. I think we're losing, um, a step there. And so you're probably in the boat that, no, you probably don't, because if you're paying... But you're using the county's EIN number to get that, that credit card, I'm sure. Their EIN number. And your checking account is their own EIN?
Always open.
See, I just...
Mr. Chair, the reason why I said that phrasey is, is ultimately, you mentioned that, that the credit cards, or it doesn't end up here. Well, it really does, because it's all still money. In a roundabout way, because we're talking about that.
That, that's why I'm here.
My question to you is, why, if we've got an issue with approving credit card purchases, why wouldn't every department demand a block-style structure?
I'm not, I don't understand.
Well, what that does, if there's, if there's, if there's an issue, say for instance, if you got a department that, uh, that is making unpure purchases with a county credit card. Let's just say that. And if, if they ask for a block-style structure, in which we wouldn't see the individual purchases, like we pulled $14.33 out and approved one today, um, because we want explanation for that, we wouldn't see that. So then, that opens up an area for that department to continue making purchases that might be unpure with taxpayer monies that we can't see, ultimately have to get paid.
Well, this is the only thing that we take out of the credit card.
Right.
Otherwise, we, um, I usually buy it, and have them reverse me without the tax.
Sorry. Hence the reason why I said, I said, "Yes, it does need pre-approval." If, if there's, if there's a question, the answer is always yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
So what I would ask is that you fill out the form, and let us approve it today.
Yeah, I can do that. I don't have one, I can be, I can be back here.
So if you'd fill that out, we... We got, we got a minute or two.
You know, going, going back to the power of white bill, white construction bill net, they're only wanting to pay, the insurance company want to pay $95 for sheet rocking, texturing, and everything, which... Yeah, that's, that's, that's their part of the bill. They only, they only test up $95 for that. So that's where Nick's having the discrepancy with the insurance company on the bill. So... Might have Michael visit with him too. I got, I got the adjuster's number and everything here too. Yeah, it's, uh...
But I, I'll just, um, let David know, so he can tell me if that works out. He's got some time, so... Or you've got, or you've one. I guess David called you.
I'd rather have Michael call and visit with him, you know? Explain to them, it costs a lot of time, costs more to do business in a small town that does a big town, getting repairs done, so.
So are you up to date on it?
Yeah.
You're not being...
No, no, I've talked to Chair. I've talked about it a couple times.
So, if I go, I just don't want to... The lights, I...
No.
Do I come back with you? Okay, I'll go do that.
Any other questions for...
Do you have anything else? I'll go do that.
I just, the only thing I had is, I did, uh, talk with Nathan a little bit on that too. It sounds to me, and the affiliation with the insurance company, and what's kinda going on, got, got, uh, lowballed, like Ed was saying. Um, is there, Nick's probably in the situation to, to explain the bid and his estimate on it a little bit, even though the insurance said, hey, you know, this might be a, a follow-up with invoices on materials or, uh, labors on the drywall that need to be exposed on the final side of it. But Nick's probably pretty savvy with that, as far as the... Rather than, than saying, hey, we need a board approval on the additional two grand, we're probably not too bad yet. That might be, we might be able to get that covered under insurance.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking too, so.
Just for public clarification, Commissioner Wagner, this, uh, insurance thing, this is about the event center with the damaged wall by the women's bathroom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just would like to add, and, and put it on record, that it'd be interesting for us to see what a bid would be, to put stanchions up, like they just did in front of, like, bond cars. Those might be worth our time, because we've had, we've had a couple of these issues. I mean, the ornament was next year. Um, see what that would, would cost.
Well, we're friends, but that we might have records to do that, some kind of barricades like that too. Keep this from happening again, so we don't do this again.
Right. And I certainly think we can replace them.
And is that being handled by the driver's insurance, or...
Yes.
Okay, good, okay, thank you.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootlegger's liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing. It's amazing what this area has done, totally amazing.
Kathy's here for the discussion, President D. M. Wall discussion. Come on Kathy.
Thank you. Well?
You're up.
I'm Kathy Decker-Lavasour. I grew up in Newcastle. We wasted a long time, recently returned basically to help get the memorial built. And I believe you have a copy of the resolution? And there are certain things that are required to host this, one of which is a piece of land, approximately three acres. And just, I think we have all that. I know the gentleman who's working on the grant writer, he made the assumption we were going to use the, the wall at our building site, but we hope to be building in the near future. You got out of the contract and we're going to all, use all both of people to do the building now. So, what can I tell you?
I guess, where, where are you looking at to have it at now?
It's out by the Pinnacle Bank, there's a sign that says.
No, for the cabin one.
Oh, we really have not determined that, but we have several suggestions that would be big enough. Then the other thing is, maybe you want to know, is that when you do this, you not only host the wall, but you have, there's thing you want to do, which is have a staff on, on hand to tell them what goes on with the wall, what it means, how it affects the community and have ceremonies there, which is all accounted for in the grant writer's plan. And we did have something else. As you know, we have two Western County people on that wall, Vietnam wall. Were you aware of that? And this is, this is a website, it's all the faces. These are the faces that go to the name on the wall. If you ever want to research the Vietnam wall. Of course, I have to tell you, this is very near and dear to me because my brother, my brother passed away from AIDS. So, this is my mission now. And these are two faces that go to that wall and their names are on that wall. One from Lufton, one from Newcastle. So, this is, this affects us locally too. We have families and loved ones that care and have members there. And there's others. Maybe you see the wall on the BFW that showed the killed in action list. There's several of those.
He say their names or?
These ones on, from Vietnam?
Yep.
It's Steve Boyle and Robert Leroy Shuck. Can't see you there. He blends. Pardon? He blends. I don't know if that's good or bad.
So, this is just for a traveling Vietnam War memorial, right?
Yes.
Not for our one that's going to sit at.
No, but we're, we're hoping this helps promote it and gets us good support, which we have very good support in the community. But it's also, the other very important part is to educate the younger people that don't know about Vietnam and veterans and war in general. You know, realize things happen to people a lot of the time. Like my brother, he volunteered. And once my classmates volunteered or got drafted. There's, you know, this, this county is well-known for its participation in the military. Are any of you veterans?
Me, I guess.
Yeah, I know that. So am I, yeah. It's an important job for our country. My son is also a veteran. He was in Iraq for two tours. So, it's, we really ask for your support in this so we can do something for the community that will be good for all of us for a long time. And we'll have, and as we build the wall, the memorial will have a permanent theme. Part of that memorial is we're going to have a library of people's stories, veterans' stories that we get from them or their families that, and again, show the younger people what's happened and give them the freedoms that they have now.
Is there a kind of timeframe when this would be coming through?
Well, just last week we got out of the contract with SNS. And we have Chuck Bartlett has become our engineer and he's looking at it currently, so we will know that shortly. He's figuring it out. We hope within the year.
So, what's the board's pleasure?
Do you have a number for this?
No, I was thinking I could put it on the next agenda. Because I'd like to have like the board signature, not just the chairman.
Well, and I don't know if, I don't know what it says on there, but also we are waiting for a letter back from La Croix, and I think it's going to help participate in the, between the team walls as well. We'll bring the students and have them participate in the tours and that kind of thing.
So, when do you need this for the grant?
Well, they do end up charging you some money and there is also a $3,000 upfront fee to pay that. I think I might.
I guess what my question is, can you wait two weeks to have us type up the resolution?
Yeah, I think so. I would have to ask the grant writer, but he's, he's done and holding off on a couple of other things of it too, like the letter from La Croix, we need that. So, yeah.
Quick comment if I might?
Yes, Dan.
I had the privilege of volunteering at this wall back in my home state. And it's very moving to see it. One thing, it's beautiful and it's very moving and I watched veterans coming all night to pray at that wall. And if this county can do it, I think it'd be worthy of it, so.
It is open 25 days.
And you need volunteers.
And you have to have volunteers there all the time, 24 hours.
Yeah, I don't think we have any problem with that, that's my personal opinion.
Right. Everyone's been very generous with their time to do this, to be involved in this.
Well, the actual one in Washington DC absolutely moved you to tears.
Yeah, I've been there, yeah.
And, but what I, what my comment was is a lot of people won't get to go there.
Right.
They just, they don't take the time, they don't, the women's one is too. If there's any way you could ever add the addition of the, of the seven women is unbelievable.
Yes.
So, that would be nice too, if there was some.
Well, we'll, we'll tell them what to do then.
That's exactly what you have to do. Don't forget the women, I mean.
Yeah, don't forget the women. There are eight women's names on the wall.
Absolutely. Well, and there's a beautiful, beautiful tribute to them too.
Yes. Yes, there is.
So, I don't think we have a problem, we just have to wait for the resolution.
Yeah, we'll get the resolution out because in two weeks we'll get it all signed and back to you.
Okay. That'll be fine. We don't have to vote or anything.
Well, we will do that.
We'll vote to have our signatures on it when we have the.
I, I see no problem with the board passing it, that all.
I don't think there will be either and that's why I was asking what your timeframe is because if you needed ASAP, the three of us will be glad to. We just have to have a signature sheet on it.
Oh, I see.
And a number. And so, that's what our questioning was, is do we have a number, do we have this?
That makes sense.
But if you can wait the two weeks, then.
We can't wait the two weeks because we're waiting on other things as well.
Okay. We have no problem with that then.
Right.
We'll do what, whatever we can do to help.
That'll be on two weeks' agenda as old business and we're going to take care of it.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Expect to see you.
Appreciate your attention.
Actually, we.
Appreciate you coming in, thank you.
Appreciate what you're doing this way.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Very happy to be doing it.
Well, we'll, we'll. See you, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you there.
Next up is old business. We had to reissue a check issued?
Yes. Paul, we contacted Tyler Tech and they were eager to walk him through the process so that it did not cause any issues and it was sent out.
Didn't mess with any budget thing?
Can you brief us on the process?
I have no idea what he did or wasn't. There really didn't.
It's Paul that gave you?
I'll make him tell me. I did ask him about it. Um, I got my little. So, you got in the weeds for me? So, maybe. Okay. That's per year. I shouldn't have put that on there. Yeah, that's annual. But the one, the $21 is every month for each, it's $7 for each.
I'll just put you the note right here. It's monthly at least to her.
Yeah. So, I think we're all compliant.
Thanks, Colby, don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, you guys are fine.
So, what usually happens is I end up having to call the Tyler Tech to help me through the process. And they issue me instructions on how to do everything, but it's essentially it is trying to reissue a check on a closed book budget without touching that budget and then without reissuing it without touching the current budget. So, it's a lot of trying to figure out what process so it doesn't hit our current budget, which is usually the main problem. This, this time though, the reissuing, the canceling, avoiding of that check and reissuing it basically would just be a wash. So, it wouldn't touch our budget, it doesn't touch last year's budget. It's just a, it was canceled, reissued and a wash. And that's, that's essentially how that went.
That's exactly what I was, um.
Thanks, Colby. Absolutely, guys.
I think a lady who gave different directions from last time.
Yes. She was phenomenal, so, and I have her contact and photo, talk with her directly so that it's easier every time.
Nice.
Excellent.
Thank you for your attendance.
Thank you, guys.
I was afraid you weren't going to come.
I got real nervous, so. Thank you, guys. So, thanks, Colby.
Boy, that made it simpler.
We have a credit card pre-authorization form filled out for the fairgrounds.
Mr. Chairman, I'm able to approve the credit card pre-authorization for the western county fairgrounds.
Second, in motion, proper second to authorize the, approve the credit card pre-approval. I made a note on there, the one of the $21 fee, that's a monthly fee, the other is an annual fee. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
Thank you.
You are authorized.
Awesome.
You have nothing under new business. Next is public comment. Every public comment.
Well, we're so ahead of the game, I don't know what to do.
Stay warm.
Hearing no public comment, there's commissioners' comment. Mr. Rupert.
Um, we had discussed last time in the commissioners to have a meeting with the joint powers of the, and it was stated that maybe it would be the second meeting in January. I'd like to be there if it's possible, that would be moved, maybe the first of February or whatever's convenient, just wherever we're going, but I'm just asking if it could be moved.
Pushed back another month.
Pushed back another month. Number two is today, I was invited to a Zoom meeting to talk about perhaps having, this is just information, so I said, yeah, it wasn't going to be a problem for me to be there, but I wanted, anybody else that wanted to, is to talk with the Secretary of State concerning, oh, I can't come up with the, the name of the, but it's a title lock. And some counties have instituted title lock. So, the curiosity is, was it available and how? And so, just to, to find out. And if anybody wants to, I thought maybe we might be pushing, they moved it up to 1 o'clock and I thought, maybe this isn't going to work out. But I think I'll stay here if anybody wants to stay and listen, listen. And I'll just get on my computer and, and if you want to stay and listen to see what they were having this, this conversation about. And then later on, have a conversation about the, the agenda stuff, but I'll wait for another day for that.
Mr. Board? I would like, I already did, but I want to thank Colby again for coming in and briefing on that discussion of the reissue of the check because we did, we didn't know aside from contacting Paul, the state auditor, of how that could even be done. So, I'm glad he put the time in the working to find that out. We know what to do in the future if that comes up.
Oh, I want to say, I mean, the Vietnam War, travel me, that monument, that's something very touching to a lot of us. Think it's important, we support it. That's all I have. Anything else you just come for this board? Meeting will adjourn.